All right, let's go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here in our chambers. All two of you. And the 20 million that are out there. Watching in TV land. We'd like to start here. I've asked Councilmember Mendenhall to give us our opening prayer and message.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be here today. We're grateful for the opportunity to discuss the affairs of this city. We're grateful for the first responders that help all of us in this city. Please watch over and protect them. Please watch over and protect the residents of this city as they go throughout their daily lives and serve each other that they'll be watched over and protected as well. Please bless us. We'll be able to have a spirit with us as we meet together and discuss the affairs of the city tonight. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I've asked Councilman Marshall to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's go to public comments. Anyone in the public who'd like to come and address the mayor and the council, you're welcome to come on up. Seeing none, let's go to council comments. Councilmember Beck.
Well, thank you. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to all of those who campaigned for the last five months and especially to Mike Mendenhall, our next mayor, and Kevin Euler and Shane Marshall. I'm super excited to work with them all. And then my only other thanks will be to mayor for coming to speak last week to our youth city council, taking them down memory lane of serving as on city council and mayor, and they really enjoyed their time with you. So, thank you.
Glad to do it. It was awesome. All right, Councilman Marshall.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of things. I attended our airport board meeting this past couple of weeks ago. There are two agenda items today we're going to talk about that we discussed there. We appointed a new board member. We're going to talk about some tie-down issues, so we'll get to those in a bit. Great meeting. I think we are lucky to have people that are that dedicated to put the time in to help run that airport with Chris's help. So, it's a good, it's a good bunch of people. I missed the animal shelter meeting. However, they have issued a directive that will change the way they choose to euthanize the animals down there. They're moving away from. What are they moving away from? They're moving away from. Gas chamber, thank you very much. To lethal injection. So, that is going to be phased out over the next year. They, they expect to get that fully implemented by November of '22. So, that's a direction that most of the country's headed and they, they're following suit. So, I think we've all gotten an email or a letter or two hoping that that would be the direction, and that is in fact the direction they're headed. So, I think that there'll be some police citizens out there. I think that's it for me. Short and quick.
I like it.
I knew you would.
You know, some of the others ought to take your lead. All right, Councilman Argal.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to also congratulate Kevin Euler and Shane and Mike. Looking forward to working with them, serving with them, and thank those who put their name out there. It's not an easy thing to campaign and go through that process, and grateful that they were willing to, to choose to serve in this community. And great Spanish Fork and just want to tell them thanks and looking forward to the future. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Councilman Gordon.
Yeah, Mayor. Echo that. Congratulations, Councilman Mendenhall and Councilman Marshall and Kevin Euler for their efforts and all those who also ran through the primary as well as the general election. It's a great, great time. Got to know a lot of people and, and thought it was a great, great campaign season. I, two weeks ago, was gone. I was in Florida for a garbage conference. These guys think that's so funny when I say the garbage conference, but. Swanna sounds.
We're just jealous. We're not.
Swanna sounds a little different. Me and Max Sabey went down and a lot of different discussions. It's, it's very interesting to see what challenges our, our neighbors and also here locally as well as all over the country and world. There's international things discussed there. One of the biggest takeaways from me is that we are going away from the top 10 in the can. If you go to Spanish Fork's website, currently, we talk about the top 10 in the can, and we're going, this is fresh off the presses. This won't, this will be presented tomorrow at our South Utah Valley Solid Waste District. That many of you know I chair that board and, and we're going to the Super Six. One cool thing that we're learning in the recycling business is that of the 38 million tons of cardboard that are recycled in America, what, what typically happens is now you can't put your pizza boxes in your, your, in your blue can, right? Because it's contaminated. However, because of the Amazon effect and of that 38 million tons of cardboard that's being recycled, the paper mills are able to absorb that, a lot of that contaminant. So, we're not telling you it's okay to put the pizza boxes in your, in there, but because of this huge influx of cardboard, we're finding that most blue cans are being used for all of the cardboard, which is good cardboard, and then we're moving to this Super Six. If you were to look, it's, it's really close to what's on our city website, but we'll change it to this. And obviously, we want clean cardboard, paper, food boxes, aluminum cans and plastic containers, steel cans. We want them rinsed out if you can, and then keep everything else out. If you question what should go in there, please, you know, feel free to reach out to the city or, or any online source. But, but really what should be going in your blue can is that. We also had some new era board meetings. I also chair that board, as you know, Mayor, and, and one of our challenges there is that currently our garbage that is picked up by the private sector, we currently are contracted with Republic Services to haul our garbage to our transfer station. If it's picked up from a residence, it has to go to the transfer station. What we're seeing is an influx of high-density housing. That high-density housing may use a dumpster, and so that dumpster can be taken now because the hauler looks at that as commercial. And so, we're currently working on some efforts to, you know, see if we can still get that tonnage to come through our transfer station, because the more tons we get, the, the more we can keep our, our rates where they need to be. We're currently building, as everybody knows, the new transfer station by the jail. That building just seems to keep going up in cost as we all know what construction prices are doing, and we're still able to keep our garbage rates where they are while we're building that building. We want to continue to do that. So, we'll continue the conversations with our private haulers and, and those as we build more high-density buildings. We want to be able to make sure that we're still getting that private, public garbage into our facility. Water quality board meeting up at the state. That currently we're working through, we have eight, eight big projects, capital improvements projects that'll go from 2021 to 2025. Spanish Fork's wastewater facility is one of those. Of those eight projects, $2.7 billion is being spent throughout the state of Utah to improve the water quality, specifically what goes through our wastewater treatment facilities. We had, we had, you know, let me think here, Salina City coming in and asking for help with their improvements because their headworks is not as sophisticated as ours. So, the more people use something like a flushable wipe that's really not flushable, they don't have things to stop that at the front end of theirs, and they're having big problems. And so, as the water quality board, we're giving them money to help them do their upgrades that they need. Along the same lines as water, yesterday had a Mount Nebo water meeting. It's no, it's no secret that the studies that were presented are showing that our groundwater and our precipitation are both on the downgrade line, and both of those two are equal since the 40s. They parallel each other and are going down. And so, looking at options to do groundwater recharge opportunities. Fascinating to, to look at the different well studies that were, that were done through Spanish Fork as well as our neighboring communities, Mapleton and Salem and Springville, and see that Springville's wells are really showing a decline, and it's because of growth. We know that's going to, to continue to happen with us. So, we'll continue to work on some opportunities to look at groundwater recharge to help. Community incentives, we'll probably look at for zero escaping as well. Yards and all those things were discussed at the Mount Nebo meeting yesterday. Are you sick of me yet?
No.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I just wondered what you're doing in your spare time.
Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mendenhall.
Hey, Mayor, and yeah, echo the, the same words of the election. Congrats, Shane. Congrats, Kevin. Kevin was here before. He, we're going to say a good job, and he's not in the council meeting. He figured this is the time that I don't have to be doing a council meeting. But, yeah, great, great campaign season, good ideas from lots of candidates and, and ideas that rose to the top and, and were decided on by the voters. So, sure appreciative of, of the candidates that, that ran and good, good time and good to have over with as well. One comment about the joint meeting we had last week with Planning Commission down at the fairgrounds, and people have watched that online too. Hopefully, hopefully the public has. But, great meeting with the, the Planning Commission regarding the river bottoms vision and the landowners down there. Sure appreciate them coming and, and speaking and, and us being able to be there and good leadership from, from the mayor to, to run a meeting and, and so we can get all that, all that feedback. I, I do want to share, you know, it's, it's a topic that was discussed during the election. It's a topic that's going to be discussed in the future. The, a, a quick story about, really quick, about a couple of months ago, when the mayor and Shane and I met with some landowners down there. And this story just kind of puts it in perspective of, of, you know, whatever, whatever happens with the river bottoms, whatever solution we come up with over, over the, the working time of these next months and, and beyond. This landowner, that's, that's one of the older landowners owning land for a long time down there, mentioned a story about the trail and, and how he thought the trail wasn't a good, wasn't a good thing from the beginning down there that it invited people down close to his property that, that maybe, you know, got on his property from time to time, and he never had to worry about that before. But then he switched his tone, got emotional when he told us the story that, that his attitude towards the trail changed when he saw a, a family with a father that was in a wheelchair going with his kids on the trail. And the reason why he got emotional is his own father spent a lot of, of his life in a wheelchair, and he felt like, hey, that's a, it showed him at that time that somebody that was, was in a position that his dad was in, was able to now be close to this resident, this, this, this man's farm, see the farm fields, enjoy the trail with his family. And, and so in that spirit, and, and I'm an optimist. I think I have to be one for work, but I am one by nature too, that, that I'm optimistic that we will come to solutions with, with the river bottoms, the challenges that are ahead of us, and, and land ownership, which is a, which is a fundamental right, will, will, will obviously be respected and, and taken into first account. But, but I just want to give kudos again to those landowners for coming, for, 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 for speaking. There's going to be a lot more speaking into the future about that. And, and reiterate, just like that, that old farmer said months ago, that, that there's some, there's some middle ground. There's some good things that can come out of, of this stuff, and I'm confident of that. The Chamber of Commerce met Thursday, last Thursday morning for their board meeting. This was the first board meeting with some of the newly elected board members of the chamber. Good meeting, talking about a lot of the things coming up, recapping the, the Halloween trick-or-treat, and, and then talking about the ever-popular lights parade that's coming down Main Street. You'll get a notice again before, before that time, but it is on Saturday instead of Friday. Brandon could never make it with his Black Friday shopping. He was always late getting there, and so I think we moved it just for you.
Thanks.
But, no, we moved it because Salem is having a lighting ceremony down there on their, on their pond, and, and it's a Salem, it's a Spanish Fork Salem area Chamber of Commerce. A lot of people like to go to that on Friday, and so the light parade's going to be on Saturday. So, make sure, bundle up, bring your, your kids and your family and, and enjoy that. The Chamber and business has put on a good show Saturday, the 27th. Lastly, Mayor and I had a chance to, to meet with Senator Romney last week up in, this is just outside of our city boundaries between Spanish Fork and Salem here. I'm looking like I got stung by a bee, but you're looking really good there, Mayor. This, this was on construction site of the ULS pipeline that a lot of people wonder what's going on when they see construction going up there, but it is a pipeline that Chris could spend the next three hours talking to us about, right? Okay.
No, no, no.
Pretty exciting stuff that you have water coming down the canyon now at pressure in a pipe. Brandon mentioned the water situation we are in, not just in our area, but the west as a whole. When you're piping water and not losing it to evaporation and, and erosion of, of ditches and canals, it, it saves a lot, a lot of water. And Senator Romney came and, and asked the mayor and I to come simply because his vote on the infrastructure package was one of the senators that, that voted for that, and specific funding in, in the amount of $50 million was allocated to the ULS pipeline. So, these are members of the Central Utah Project there that toured us around, showed us the pipe going in and, and how this funding speeds up their project and gets water to more places in Utah County, specifically South Utah County, eventually up to Salt Lake County as well, but, but does get water at pressure to places so we can conserve it better. So, it was a good afternoon, meeting, meeting with them there and getting a, a tour of the, the facility and really showing some, maybe some people that don't get out here enough from DC, Mayor, like where you roamed around and, and how beautiful. They kept on commenting how pretty this area is. So, we were proud to show them that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Part of that one nice thing about that water line, that ULS, ULS line is being piped, that will also help so the evaporation won't happen so much, so we can put more water back into the, the ground like you talked about. And we're looking at ways to save water and, and we appreciate that. So, I too like to congratulate the candidates. I really like to congratulate them because 16 years I didn't have to run. So, it was nice, you know? So, it was, it was good. It was good to sit back and watch these others run, and they, I just want to tell all the candidates that ran that I appreciate each and every one of them, and like you said, like Chad said, it's hard to, it's not easy to put your name out there and want to serve, and I appreciate those who want to serve this great city. It's awesome. And so, congratulations, Mike and Shane and Kevin on that. So, all right, let's move down to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
I'm glad you're back.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Not like that.
Public hearing. We got Resolution 2125 adopting airport tie-down fees.
Okay, we have a situation at the airport where we are out of tie-down locations. So, this is like running out of parking spots for airplanes. And if you land an airplane at an airport and there's nowhere to park, that's a really bad situation, especially for some of the businesses that we have, like best tugs, where pilots are flying in from all over the country to, to look at these best tugs and, and try them out and see how they work, and they're having to send these pilots to Provo to park their airplane there and then take a taxi down to Spanish Fork to look at these tugs. And multiple situations like that has led the airport board to recommend that we change the fee for these tie-down spaces. Right now, it's at $370 a year to have a parking spot at our airport. That seems really low, but it's actually. Provo, Provo is a little bit more than that at 420, and, and so it's, it's not as low as it sounds. But what we would like to do is propose that we raise that to $600, but keep that for just the paved areas. There's a, a fairly big area on the other side of the runway that's not paved, but it's a good place to tie down an airplane that you could still use for the $370 rate is what we're proposing. Now, we think that a lot of the planes that could go there are the ones that haven't flown in a year. And, and so that's what we'd like to really encourage is, is.
So, Chris, there are planes sitting there today tied down that haven't flown for a year.
And so what we would do is we would actually tell those planes they, they need to move over there and, and leave the open spots, I mean, the paved spots for planes that are actively flying. And so, anyway, we'd like to recommend that you approve this resolution.
And the airport board likes this idea, obviously.
That, yeah, they recommended that it be done.
Any other questions for Chris? If there's not, I would entertain a motion.
Do we have to do public hearing?
This sounds a public hearing, yeah, on mine.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I got ahead of myself.
I move we go into public hearing.
Yeah, let's do that.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come talk about this tie-down resolution, you're welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now.
Row call vote. It's a resolution.
Like this, right here. Row call vote. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution 2125 adopting airport tie-down fees.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Marshall, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a row call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
That passes. All right, ordinance 22-21, impact fee, amend ordinance revising impact fees.
Okay, this is simply expanding our table for businesses to a really high level of power service since we've had of late quite a few businesses with, with large power demands. So, we're expanding that table so that we can, or they more readily can calculate what their impact fee would be. It also proposes a, a little reduction in our transportation impact fee. And thirdly, it proposes that, that we do something where if a business comes in and they're going to build a regional trunk line of some sort or a regional facility of some sort, that they will get paid back for over time through impact fees, that knowing what their reimbursement will be that first year. So, what happens is if you built a, a big trunk line that went down Canyon Road, okay, and you had to do it for your development, but that trunk line is going to service a lot more than just your development, we would make an agreement with you and say, okay, every August, we'll pay you a check based on how many impact fees we collect and, until eventually you're paid back. And so what we're saying is if, if you're a large business and you're doing that, and then you're going to pay a big impact fee as well, what we'll do is we'll calculate what that first check would be, and we'll put a, a credit on your impact fee that you would pay originally. So, it's not like, you know, you're paying this, this big check for your impact fee, and you're building this big facility, and then a few months later, we're writing a check right back to you. And it seems like this makes it a lot nicer for these businesses in that they don't see themselves writing out all these big checks as much right out of the gate. And so, it kind of helps, encourages them to come, is it's not so costly. And the city really isn't out much. We're, if we're getting some money and then we're right, we're sending it right back to them a few months later, it's just made sense to do this. And so, that, this is made available to all the different impact fees depending on what they front. So, those are the three changes.
Okay, thanks. All right, this is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come and talk about this issue, you're welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments, or editorials?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Go Shane.
Go ahead, Craig.
I was just going to ask, can you make this retroactive? I could use that $600.
It didn't go down that much for residents, so you're.
Nice try.
The answer's no, but don't feel too bad.
Thank you. Shane?
Chris, stay up here. I'm going to get the seats right tonight, I promise. So it says on the third bullet you have that the Public Works Director may determine the credit. What's may?
So.
Sometimes you will, sometimes you won't?
Yeah, sometimes it makes sense, other times it wouldn't make sense to do this, and so.
And is that, that's you that makes that call?
Mm-hmm.
Based on what criteria that it makes sense or not?
So my staff would come to me and say, we think the credit will be this much. And based on that, then I'd say, well, if your impact fee is 50,000 and your credit is going to be probably 15,000 next year, we'll do the credit there. And I can't imagine not doing that if asked, but there are some instances where maybe the credit would be 50,000 and, or the credit would be not enough to really make it worth the hassle. And so, for instance, if you're doing a sewer project and we have a big treatment plant where the bulk of the money is going to go towards the treatment plant, and you have a little $10,000 regional sewer facility that you're doing, and the credit's in a couple hundred dollars, probably wouldn't do it then.
Do you all have like a, I think Jordan's group did this when we talked about how to process utility payments, they have sort of the standard operating procedure outside the ordinance that gives you like the, not, it doesn't give you authority, but it tells you, the public, how you're going to make a decision. Do you have something like that for this?
So for this, it would be, it would just follow what it says here in this ordinance. We could make one.
I'm hung up on the may part. It feels pretty subjective. And while I want to give you discretion to that, because I don't think I want you come in here every time and say, can we do this? Some structure around that may, I think would be helpful so that if you're gone, we can make a very consistent decision every single time, or as consistent as possible. I don't want to change the ordinance, but if we had some guidance for someone in your position to follow, I think I'd feel more comfortable with the may. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so how would you phrase that? You just.
I'm making this up as we go, clearly.
How many times will this happen? And you think.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I think generally we will offer it to big facilities that we are really trying to get to come, and we don't want them to be discouraged by the impact fees. And it's hard to imagine very many others.
So.
Okay.
My point is, this isn't something that's going to be on a regular basis, so personally I don't have a problem with that.
That makes sense. I was envisioning it, it was a routine thing, but that's not the case.
Probably once every three years.
Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you clarifying that for me.
Anything to help the cause?
Anything to get through the discussion?
All right, any other questions or editorials?
I'm glad you allowed me the leeway for an editorial, by the way. I appreciated that.
You got it. All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 22-21, impact fee amendment, ordinance revising impact fees.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. This will also be a row call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right, that passes. New Business, Resolution 21-26, certifying the canvas of the 2021 Spanish Fork City Municipal General Election.
It's a mouthful. All right, so as we get started. I thought we would start off, I don't know if you remember, but a while back I told you I got some documents from 18, the 1800s. It went back to 1860, but there was a sample ballot in there from 1897, so I just thought it would be fun to show you.
Pay attention to this, Mayor.
I did not run that year.
Notice who did, though.
Is it not working? Yeah. Okay, so as you can see, down in the bottom, it says 1897.
Yep, they used to have two parties.
So will you send it back to the other one? Thank you. So as you can see, at the very top is where you would vote, and you would vote for all the people down the line. That's how they used to vote, you'd vote by ticket. So if the people liked all those people in your line, that's how you would win or how you would lose. Let's go to the next one. It does work. What's kind of cool about this, as I started looking closer, there are three names on here. Alma Andrews actually is related, is a great, great, great grandfather to two of our employees here in Spanish Fork. He ran, but he was on the ticket that lost, but it's kind of neat to see that history and that legacy. Also, we had Benjamin Argal for mayor. He won the Democratic ticket. That is Councilman Argal's third great grandfather. And then this Carolina Pace, who ran for treasurer and won, I'm told by the state archives that she is the first elected official in Spanish Fork City, and that they think that she may be the first elected official in the state of Utah. They're still pursuing that.
Woman.
Woman, yes. They're still pursuing that to see if that's the case. But that was just interesting to see this history, to see the legacy of Spanish Fork City and just how it's come all about. So let's go to the next one. Here is our, yeah, here's our general election. And you can see, we have Mike Mendenhall, who.
Congratulations.
Got the most votes. And then we also have Kevin Euler and Shane, who had the most votes as well. And you can see over here on the left that there is the registered voter total, and then how many ballots were cast, and that 30.55%. We did go up from the primary election, which is always a good thing, to get people involved and get them out there. But that is the official election results. Will you move on to the next one? Thank you. Here's the votes by precinct. As you can see, everything in green, that means that they won that precinct. And you can just kind of go down and it's just kind of fun to see which precincts they won. And if they tied, then I put it on both of them.
You'll have this on the Spanish Fork website.
Yes, yes, for everybody to see. Let's see if this, oh, perfect. So here are the general election statistics. At the very top, we get those same numbers that we've seen, but then below, you can see that the mail-in ballots not accepted was 120, and then they delineate out why that is. We had 27 that were returned unsigned, and they weren't able to get them to come and sign them. We also had signatures that did not match the voter record. They would have reached out to those people as well. But as you can see, we had 61 whose postmark was invalid. So they probably thought that they could put it in the mailbox on the second, when it needed to be in the election box on the second. And the first was when they needed to put it in the mail. So that's probably where those came from. We had 29 people who voted early. Probably, I thought that number would be bigger, but we'll take it. And then we had one provisional ballot, one same-day registration, and then 46 who were the U O C A V A, which is the Uniformed and Overseas Citizen Absentee Voting Act, where we do everything we can to make sure that those overseas in the military and otherwise have the right to vote. And you can see that we had four of those come back by mail. And then we had some ballots that were duplicated because they were damaged, and that's just their way of accounting for all the ballots that came in. And that's it. I wanted to say that I heard from one of the candidates just the other night, he said, you know, I came into this election and I was nervous and worried, and he said, but I came away with so many friends after this. And he isn't one that got the most votes. He said it was totally worth it, and he has friends for life now. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Who would normally sign a whole bunch of stuff?
Thank you for not having us do that.
No signature.
We are going to get a signature, one signature from you tonight.
Brilliant.
Karen, thank you for doing all this work this year.
It was fun, wasn't it?
It was fun.
She was awesome. Like, just thank you on behalf of all the candidates that are on it. It was, the information was always there. You never let us fail, so I appreciate that a ton. Because it's really easy to overlook those dates.
For sure, for sure. There's a lot of elections.
You did great.
I also want to say thanks to Tara, but I also want to just note, previous elections without the mail-in ballot, most of the time it was 10, 13% was always going, especially on a non-election year. 30% is an improvement. It's a good thing, people are getting them voted.
Yeah.
Wait, it was a non-election year?
Non-presidential year, sorry.
I just wanted you to clarify.
Non-presidential.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we need to ratify this, and this will be, so I need a motion to approve this.
I move, oh, go ahead, Shane.
Go ahead. Motion to approve Resolution 21-26, certifying the canvas of the 2021 Spanish Fork City Municipal General Election.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. Row call vote, Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
So that's interesting, we got two that voted for it and that ran. Proud of you guys, so. All right, let's move down to B, Planning Commission Appointments and Reappointments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. With Commissioner Euler becoming Councilman Euler, first of all, there's a need to appoint a new planning commissioner. I understand that Mayor Laufson has proposed that Michelle Carroll be appointed to the Planning Commission, so that's item of business number one. The second item is described with the terms that we have and the information that you received, from time to time, there's a need to do something of a true-up relative to planning commissioner terms, which are really intended to be two, three-year terms, with one commissioner be appointed to their first term, and starting each July, another commissioner being reappointed and starting their second term each July, within as well, one commissioner ending their service each June. That way, things are pretty balanced. There's one new person each year. We can develop seniority, experience, and different things like that, that I think have been very valuable to the city over the years. But from time to time, things happen, like commissioners get elected, or they change jobs, or other things happen that make it such that those terms get thrown a little bit off. So the way that we have things spelled out would get us back, I think, as close as we practically can now to that idea of commissioners being on that schedule that I just described. That's our proposal, and that's what we're here for tonight.
When would, when does Michelle take office?
First of the year. First of the year. Yep, yeah, Kevin wants to finish out, and he's not a council member until the first of the year. So, so first of all, let's do, I'd like to recommend Michelle Carroll as a member of the planning board. Let's do that one first.
I recommend approval of the mayor's appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Aye, second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, let's approve as outlined here. Will that work? Is that okay?
I move to approve Planning Commission Appointments and Reappointments.
So, can I have a.
As outlined.
Go ahead, Shane.
So we're not reappointing or appointing them, are we? Are we just approving the dates in which they will be appointed or reappointed?
I think you could phrase it either way.
It seems like we're reappointing them.
I kind of look at it that way. That's sort of why we use that phraseology.
Okay. That's fine, just being clear. It's not, we're actually reappointing these individuals to that seat. Is that correct?
In accordance with the schedule.
With the new schedule, that's why I say according to this schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Brandon.
No, that's good, that's the reappointment.
I'll second that, Brandon.
So we got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mayor, how did you, great job picking Michelle. She's going to be an awesome addition to the Planning Commission. That is, I didn't realize she lived in Spanish Fork until I found that information out. That's a great job.
Shane, I worked with her on the Business Care Acts for Utah County, that there was a select few of the mayors that were selected to help fund all that money to the businesses during there, and she headed that up.
So you're going to be a great rock.
Totally impressive. And I was the same way. I didn't realize until halfway through all that that she lived in Spanish Fork.
That's a good catch.
She's good, so that'll help with keeping all our good board members there.
Absolutely.
So, all right, Senior Advisory Board Appointment. So, who's our senior citizen? Is that Mary Briggs? Is who we need to appoint to our new, is our board?
Senior Advisory Board.
Senior Advisory Board. So Mary Briggs, I'd like to appoint Mary Briggs to that board.
I move to accept the mayor's motion of appointing Mary Briggs to the Senior Advisory Board.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Proposed to initiate special zone changes.
Mr. Mayor, you might have thrown up the map that we have, you might have to rotate it. I'm going to try to really be brief. We talked about this about a month ago, I believe, with the council, the concept at least of the city initiating some zone changes to specifically identify areas in the community where there are industrial zones that we might feel no longer are appropriate for those parts of the community, really zeroing in on areas around what, in the relative of the near future, we hope has a new interchange at Center Street, 915. For example, the Sugar Beet Factory with an existing business there that's being relocated, and other things that have changed. We think that's an area that certainly now should be the focus of the review that we're talking about, which would result in us as city staff bringing back to the council here, maybe in just a few weeks, maybe within the next couple of months, specific zoning proposals after we had been through a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and after we had advertised for a public hearing with you, specific zone change proposals for you to consider. Just by way of an example, with the Sugar Beet Factory property, where there's a pallet factory right now, right now that's zoned industrial, too. If we were to do the same thing with that site as what happened last year with what we call the Fritzy Property, where there's a big warehouse on Arrowhead Trail, just a little bit to the west of Main Street, where that also had industrial zoning, and we went through the same type of process that I'm talking about here, that currently is zoned rural residential, with the idea that as that property is repurposed, a developer will propose to have the zoning changed to something else that allows whatever they want to do, whether it's residential or commercial or anything like that. Generally speaking, that's the type of process that we'd go through here, bringing back a specific zoning proposal for you to consider. Speaking a little bit more broadly, we have a similar situation in the vicinity of the hospital and the retail development that's happened with Canyon Creek, the result of historical plans that the city's had and historic land uses in the area where we have industrial zoning that may or may not make sense. But we anticipate bringing back, like I said, a very specific proposal for the council to consider likewise in that part of the community. And tonight specifically, we're asking for the council to take the formal step of directing staff to initiate the types of zone changes that I just described. So the phraseology that we'd be looking for in terms of direction would be something like a motion to, or I might put maybe words out there for you to consider. I move to direct staff to initiate zone changes in the vicinity of the Canyon Creek development and in the vicinity of the Sugar Beet Factory property, as is identified in the memorandum that we provided to you tonight, something like that. Does that work generally?
Those are the only two areas you're going to look at?
For now, yes. For now, yes. Trying to take it in manageable bites.
So Dave, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the Planning Commission. We talked about, not necessarily a whole-scale look at the general plan, but maybe a, take the cover off, evaluate it, maybe not make a ton of changes, but give it the opportunity for the public to comment on it as a broad picture. Could this fit into that, or does this need to be separate from it? Is there a timeline that this needs to be different from that?
Personally, I think so.
Okay.
Any conversation that we have to evaluate, review, or change the general plan, to be done properly should take at least months.
Okay.
Much before we could get to that point, I think it is important to have some zoning that could be problematic in the areas that we're talking about here changed, and that indeed is what, what we'd like to kick off tonight.
Okay.
It wouldn't, this would not, incidentally, what I think we're suggesting here, in any way, shape, or form, conflict with, you know, a bigger project to review.
Well, if it did, we could evaluate it then, I guess. But I, I think what I heard, the, the challenging zoning that's currently there, I think that's the part that makes this a different process, different timeline than the broader look.
And maybe along the lines of the general plan, I'd add that I think what we're believing really needs to happen in these cases
Is consistent.
Is that the zoning change to be more consistent with the general plan.
Okay.
Or at least to lead to uses that are more consistent with the general plan sooner or later.
It's very inconsistent with the general plan today. You're gonna bring it more consistent with it. Okay.
Really good, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
And just like you mentioned, reminding the citizens, the bottom of this memo says that it will commence the process of advertising for public hearings with the Planning Commission City Council. So we'll have public hearings. Obviously, the landowners and everybody around can come talk about it.
Correct. Yep.
Yep, let's just give them the authorization to go ahead and start change, looking at some zone changes in those areas.
So the, the notices will go out to people within three hundred feet of those two areas. That doesn't mean, if you live somewhere else, you can't comment on the process, right? I mean, it's, we're not, it's open for all to come and address the Planning Commission or the City Council.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Any other questions? If seen, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposal to initiate specific zone changes in these two areas in City Creek and, what do we call it?
Canyon Creek. We're not up in Salt Lake.
No, we're not. Canyon Creek.
And Beet Factory.
And the Beet Factory.
Great. Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall. Let's do a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Proposed Simpson Annexation accepted for further study.
The area that we're talking about here is entirely west of I-15. This being basically encompassing this area right here, if you will. So this red dashed line, if you can see that, that's the current city boundary. And in that fashion, the proposed annexation area is contiguous with the city boundary. The applicant here has spent considerable time coming up with a configuration for the annexation also that I think is somewhat logical. It doesn't really look gerrymandered or anything like that. Tenth North is the northern boundary of the proposed annexation, the bridge at Fourth North right here, and Fourth North as it goes further to west, that's the southern boundary. The properties included in the proposed annexation are all within the city's annexation policy plan. The city's made some investment in getting some infrastructure over to the west side of I-15, which certainly has, I think, accelerated this particular annexation proposal. Other things that have contributed to, I think, you seeing this at this point in time, conversations about there maybe being a commuter rail stop someplace in here, and how development of these properties might benefit eventually from having that type of facility in close proximity to the subject properties. Also, plans that I think will be undertaken here in the next few months, something that we probably will talk with UTA about, I think, in your December seven meeting, to do some very specific land planning for this general area, taking into account, again, commuter rail and an interchange being here, so that, for example, should properties in this proposed annexation be developed in the next few years, that development happens in such a way that it contributes to the value of having an interchange and commuter rail in close proximity. Lots of things seem to be coming together now that have been talked about and planned for, for a really, really long time. And in my opinion, that really syncs up well with, with considering proposals like this one. One of the things that we end up talking about at some point during the annexation process is zoning, and I could easily see, this is indeed what we've talked about with some of the, the folks that represent most of the properties in this proposed annexation area, that perhaps this annexation take quite some time. Not three months, not six months, but maybe closer to a year. So the planning work that we hope to do, you know, really in concert with UTA, to plan for just development in the general area, perhaps ends up being kind of a guide for zoning and other specific land use plans that might impact the areas of the Simpson Annexation. So that all being said, what we're asking the council to do tonight, to simply accept the annexation for further study, it doesn't obligate you in the future to approve the annexation, but it does start a formal process. But like I said, in this case, I would expect this process to take probably quite some time.
The red, the red is our current city boundary, right?
That is correct. Yep.
You probably said that. Thanks. Any other questions?
What does for further study mean? I know you explained the timeline, which I'm totally with, but what are you gonna do between now and whenever?
That's a great question. There are some specific things that Utah Code tells us we have to do. So we have to provide a certain type of notice to certain affected entities that are expressly listed out in the state law. That's what we start with. So we go through that process of providing that notice and going, and, and also with that, initiating and completing a protest period. We generally start that right away. So probably within the next few weeks, we would start that. Yeah.
I meant, we just interject that protest period starts once the city certifies that the petition is, meets the requirements of the law. So that's, that's one of the things we have to do. We have to view the annexation statute.
They do.
All twelve million.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Part of the further study is that the city recorder, with the help of the city attorney, have to, have to certify the petition, that it meets the requirements of the annexation statutes. And so once that's certified, that begins the protest period that Dave was mentioning. So that's part of the further studies.
All right. Very administrative. Some box checking.
One part of it is, but yet there's another part that I think will really come into play with an annexation like this, which is us as collectively the city, and most of the time it is city staff, working closely with the proponents of the annexation, potential developers and folks like that, to try to work through a lot of issues that we're not necessarily required to work through by state code, but that by way of our general approach to preparing for the development of areas like this as they come into the city, and also making sure that the city is being positioned as well as it can be to deal with the impacts of development with an annexation like this. That's what takes the time. So that's another big part of it, for sure.
I'm, again, very comfortable taking the time. I think the interplay between this and Center Street is extremely important. We're getting your presentation next.
I think it is next week.
Next week.
Or next meeting.
The next meeting. About UTA's plans to come south. Personally, I don't think we want to jeopardize those at all, and how those two, how this area relates to each other, I think is extremely important. So I'm fine taking the time. I mean, before you started talking, I was like, no, I don't want you to go further with, with further study. But it makes sense to start the process so we know, so we have some data to make decisions from.
Good. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed Simpson Annexation, be accepted for further study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Annual Moderate Income Housing Plan Report.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's really difficult to keep track of the countless hours that your staff has spent in preparing this report. Its preparation and presenting it to you tonight satisfies a state requirement that the legislature gave us, I want to say it was three or four years ago, to where on an annual basis, we have to provide this. Prior to that, it was every other year, we had to provide something like this. Generally speaking, this report is intended, is my perspective on it at least, to give some basic information from each community in the state to anyone that might want to review that, about how particular communities are proposing to follow the state law in terms of creating more and new opportunities for moderate income housing in the state. Frankly, I think that the particular reporting process that we've used for the past several years that gets us to where you have, what you have before you tonight, is likely going to change. That's what we hear from some folks at the League of Cities and Towns, for example. That's what we hear from some people with the Department of Workforce Services, which is the state agency that provides some things, including the data that we use for this report. We think that's probably gonna change in the next year, and frankly, I couldn't be more than, I couldn't be happier than I am about that. While there are some good things about this report, there's some things about the, the data that's available that makes it really hard for this to be a meaningful process from one year to the next, and so forth. But for now, I'll just say that I think this is the last time that you'll see this report in this format, because we'll be given some new guidance and direction from the legislature here this next spring. And tonight, I don't believe the council needs to take any action on this. I think it's just a matter of us submitting it to the council in this manner. After tonight, in fact, tomorrow morning, with a December one deadline, to have information provided back to the Department of Workforce Services, we will report to them that the report is complete. We will send the report and other required materials to them. We will post it on the city's website, also to satisfy a requirement. And I think that concludes our responsibility as the community to, to work on this particular document.
Great. You weren't gonna read all fifty-four pages into us.
I prefer not to.
Thank you.
Come on.
We prefer you not. So, go ahead, Shane.
Does the Department of Workforce Services, these are the, these are their numbers that they give that, telling us that there are twelve-hundred-and-forty people that need housing in Spanish Fork, and that there are four-hundred-and-ninety-three families that have limited options. I'm not sure what that means. Is that, that's, that's the information that come, this, that whole paragraph comes from them?
Correct. So you see the, the several different tables and so forth that are provided in the reporting document. The data that is located there comes entirely from what we were given by the Department of Workforce Services. I really don't want to go too deeply.
Don't.
Right? You don't want me to?
Don't.
I'll just say that the data is suspect, and that's the biggest challenge that I think I have in terms of presenting this to you with a lot of gusto and saying, hey, this is a great measuring stick for you to use as the city council as to how Spanish Fork City is doing, to help deal with the affordable housing problem that we have in Utah right now. Some of the anecdotal information that we include in the narrative that we submit about, you know, you've approved, for example, projects now in what's a relatively new R-four zone. You've approved a number of projects that have attached housing of one form or another, townhomes and the like, providing some of the numbers of those homes that will be built here subsequent to your approvals, and that type of a thing. That's more of the boots-on-the-ground type of data that we like to track. And what I wish is that the system were more uniform, so that every community in Utah ultimately ended up providing that same type of information, so that we could maybe measure ourselves more accurately with our neighbors, other communities out the state, and so forth, so it would be more of an apples-for-apples comparison, which unfortunately, I don't think this gives anybody. So, you know, down to state legislators who, this is the result of them trying to deal with the affordable housing issue, even them. So to get them better data about communities maybe that are performing better than others in terms of allowing for, encouraging, or whatever, helping to facilitate more affordable housing, I think that uniformity is something that's needed very badly with the direction that we're given from the legislate, from the, the law, from the legislature. And I hope that's part of what ends up changing this next session.
Okay.
And maybe one-
I hope.
Is moderately in, moderate income housing defined somewhere? Is there a price point that's defined at?
It is.
Do you know what it is?
Yeah, so for example, we would take Utah County's median household income as the area median income, AMI, and whatever somebody can obtain by only spending thirty percent of that AMI, area median income, on housing, then that's moderate income housing.
Okay.
I think it's fifty percent for lower income housing, low-income housing, fifty percent of the AMI. Again, with the idea that anybody that's spending more than thirty percent of their household income on housing is housing burdened, which part of the reality of the market that we're in today, right, is that a whole lot of people fit into that category, which also kind of makes this particular kind of reporting and some of the metrics that we use really hard to get, I think, a lot of benefit from because so many people that historically wouldn't be considered as being, you know, housing burdened and that type of thing today, by those definitions certainly are.
So, rough figures, if the AMI was fifty thousand, it'd be fifteen thousand dollars if you've spent on housing in, in a year.
Roughly, exactly.
Okay, I got you.
All right, thanks, Dave. Appreciate the information. And Shane will probably go home tonight and read it all.
I read it all already.
Oh, yeah, right.
Dave brought up the league, but our, obviously, our push in the league is always the keys that the cities hold, we're willing to use. There's a lot of keys we don't hold in affordable housing, as far as land costs and the cost of lumber and things like that, that start to exacerbate a problem that the keys we hold, I'm proud that we work with them. This, we're a model of for it in Spanish Fork, so we do a good job, and it's credit to you guys who do a good job. But we don't hold all the keys to make these, make it affordable.
That's a, that's a good point, Mike. I think that both of those zones that are created are, are being used now. I think some see that as a way to put more people in the community. I don't think that's necessarily what the goal is, right? The goal is to have a, a different unit that someone can afford, and have a diverse set of housing types across the city that, that can have a diverse citizenry. So I think that it's easy to say the density is bad, but, but if you're looking at what we're trying, the goals we're trying to accomplish is to provide places for our kids and our grandkids to live. And, and right now, that is where they can afford to live, so.
Can I share an example from the left? That is kind of shocking. Near the neighborhood Walmart condominiums being constructed, those are being marketed at essentially three-hundred thousand dollars. It was not many years ago, right, five or six?
Less than that.
Where you could have gotten a three-thousand square foot home on a quarter-acre lot for three-hundred thousand dollars. And wages, of course, we know have not changed that dramatically. So, again, in one sense, the same metrics that are used to identify how much people can afford to spend on housing, identify what really has created a need for a different type of housing product today than what we were accustomed to just a few years ago.
Right. And so we, we addressed that need five years ago with these two nodes, two new zones. We're gonna have to do that again and find a, a different product that can be affordable, because, again, three-hundred thousand dollars. Because, again, $300,000, I mean, I'm looking at my two kids, they're going to graduate in, in this next year, and I don't see them, they'll have two solid jobs, and their spouse will have a good, solid job and 300 grand. I don't want the mortgages on 300 grand, but that's a couple thousand dollars a month, $1,800 a month. That is easy to get to 30% of your income.
Definitely.
I will stop.
Perfect. All right, let's move down to G. Leonard Holmes requests approving for setback reduction for the Escalade Master Plan Development.
The folks within our gave us some materials that we sent to you last week. They said they would have somebody here tonight to represent them. I don't want to represent them. So whatever you want to do, obviously, it's your prerogative if you want to consider this tonight, if you want to continue it, if you want to deny it.
This is the third time they've brought this to us.
Yeah.
So I deny it.
I don't know what we're just saying.
Well, you've already denied it.
You could take the letter that Mr. Ryan submitted and consider that, but.
The justification they're using is that third-car garage.
Correct.
Right? And that seems like a valid reason to have a smaller setback. I know that Stacy's concerned, and it's well-founded that it feels like we're squishing folks in there. I think one of my things is that the homeowner gets to choose the squishing of them in there, right? Do you'd rather have a bigger house or a bigger yard? And that they get to make that decision. I do really like that product with the third-car garage, so I'm leaning towards saying yes, but it'd be nice to have some representation and tell us why they want to do that. I mean, that, show up.
I'm fine with those two and lots that they've talked about, to take care of those. But in the middle, can it just be a case-by-case basis? If someone wants a third-car garage, we were just talking about a $300,000 home as a condo now. If someone can afford to live here but only have a two-car garage and make it work with some elbow room.
I think, I would be more comfortable if we pushed this and let, tell them if they're going to come, it'll be on the next, if they're not going to come, then they have what they have, you know?
I might know that, and if the homeowner wanted to come in and say, I want to build this at 540.
So, I mean, I hate to have us speculate. Yeah, let's make a motion.
I make a motion, we tabled, item G.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. H, Utah Aviation Lease Agreement.
There's a graphic in the agreement. We have Utah Aviation has proposed to build some hangars here on, on the site. This is where a lot of the existing hangars are. These hangars right here are under construction. And then they're proposing to build these hangars around the back, leaving an area here that could be used for tie-down space that we're working on. FAA grant to get that constructed. At any rate, we have a process now. If you want to tie down, no pun intended, if you want to tie down some space to do development, then you need to apply to the airport manager. The airport manager will then post that online. And for 45 days, any other entity can come in and propose to do something on that property as well. Then a committee meets and recommends to the airport board what they think is the best option, and then the airport board recommends to you. This was done, there was a, another option proposed for a little bit, but then withdrew. So, so this ended up being the only option that survived the 45 days. And what we'd like to do is we, we actually brought it to the Development Review Committee to have a look and, and kind of look for any fatal flaws with this, and, and they didn't find any. And so with the airport board's recommendation, we'd like to recommend that you award a lease to Utah Aviation for this site. As soon as that is done, we start charging what we call the land lease rate, which is different than what rate we collect for land that's under a building. And so immediately, they start paying for basically having this, this land tied up. And then they have some certain deadlines for when they have to get building permits and perform and get this developed. And so that's all in the lease. We're excited for this new process. We think it's a good one. It's a good way to get the best possible development at the airport. So I'd like to recommend that.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to. Oh.
Yeah, it's not public hearing. Sorry. Unless one of you would like him to say something.
I'd like to hear from him.
Come on up. We'll invite you up.
First off, I have to apologize because I haven't seen this, even though Chris had sent it to me. My name's Steve Wilson with Utah Aviation. There's this area over here, and again, Chris and I haven't gone over in this in detail. As you can see, we have a ditch that flows all the way down here, and this is not even usable space here. And I think if you could give Chris some, some flexibility to review this with me, and I don't think it would be fair that I'm paying a lease on ground that's not even usable over here. But other than that, I'm fine with everything. We are moving forward. Plans are in the drawing board, on the drawing board right now. So other than this area right here, I think that I'm, I'm fine with everything.
So you're saying you haven't seen this, and this is your project?
This is my project.
And so they haven't reviewed this with you?
Chris sent it to me a couple days ago, and in honest, all honesty, I didn't.
So do you want us to push it? So you have more time to review it than for us to look at it?
Well, I don't want to wait another couple weeks.
So, okay.
Do we have an option to just rework, you know, because?
Well, you're kind of late to the party here. If, I'm just, I'm just, the way we're going to prove it the way it is, or if, Chris, I was going to ask him a question here, is that typical? Or, I mean, do we, there's obviously other projects on the airport that have swamp that.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be appropriate to prove it on condition of removing the unusable space. I think that would be fair.
How do we deem, is it how many feet that is, or what, you're just going to go and?
I would just leave it up to engineering to determine that, if that's okay with you, but.
Okay.
You okay with that? Wow. So the city works with people then?
Sometimes, sometimes.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
All right. I move to approve the Utah Aviation Lease Agreement with the understanding that the applicant will work with the city to remove a section that is deemed undevelopable.
With engineering, which would be the city?
They're part of them.
Yeah.
Second.
Got a motion by Council Marshal, a second by Council Menon Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. One-year airport hangar extensions.
There should be a graphic for this as well. We are working with nine different hangars that have not met our, our standards for leasing hangar space at the airport. But through a series of, of meeting face-to-face with them and the help of council and marshal and the mayor, we've been able to come to a point where we feel like there's a path going forward that could work out, and, but that would take a year to do. And so these nine leases are to just give them a one-year lease, where normally it's a 15-year renewable lease. And so they'd have one more year to get this figured out. I sat in some of those meetings, and it's very positive. I think, I think we're going in a good direction here. And.
All right, anybody have a question on that?
Okay. Was the board okay with this, Chris?
Yes, they were unanimously. So we all got an email from one of the leases. They're included in this as well. So they're, they would get into one-year extension as well. And, and the letter, I think, articulated pretty well what we're trying to accomplish. We put all nine on notice three, four months ago that we weren't going to renew their lease. We were pretty direct about that as a commission, or a council. I think that got their attention and brought them to the table, and we had some good productive meetings. And that, that letter that we got is, I think, a result of, they want to do something, give us some time, and they'll accomplish stuff. But I think we need to be very clear that this is a one-year extension, and we're going to hold some folks accountable at the end of that one year. If we don't show progress, I think we go, we're going to need to do something, right? We, going back to that letter that Vaughn wrote, is, is where we're kind of holding that card. But we need some time, and I think we have some momentum to fix the problem down there, so. I'm super supportive of this. I think it's, it's a good thing, and Chris is right. There's a lot of momentum, a lot of good conversation around getting new hangars down there, or at least remodeling existing ones, so.
Go ahead, if you want to make a.
I will. I move to approve the one-year airport hangar extension.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Marshall, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Wastewater Treatment Plant Solid Handling and Off-Site Sewer Contracts. It's your night tonight, isn't it?
Yeah. So we're excited about this project. It's, it's part of our, what, what we call the solids handling part of the new treatment plant, where the material is actually stored in what were our digesters. And then through a series of de-watering and, and those, those screw filters that we bought will then, you know, get the water out of it, and then we can haul it to the dump. That process is now going forward. One of the concerns that we had when the, the one digester failed is we lack a lot of redundancy in this process of our treatment plant. This will solve that issue, so we're really anxious to get this part going forward now. We feel like this facility will be good for about 15 years, and then after 15 years, we'll move this process to where the new treatment plant is going in. And there's a lot of technologies that are really promising right now that we think will mature during that 15-year period, and that we'll be able to use the new treatment plant. So this is kind of temporary, if you call 15 years temporary. But it will bring a lot of redundancy to the plant that we really need to sleep more soundly. The next part of this project, the other three and a half, four million dollars, is for the off-site piping. So we have to bring new piping to where the treatment plant is going to be, and new piping out from where it is going to be to, to the outfall. And where we bonded when interest rates were at an incredibly low rate of about just over 1.5%, they're now just over 2% now. So if you can imagine, you know, what that looks like for a $100 million loan, it's significant. But bonds have spend downs, and so this is going to allow us to spend down some of the money as we get the actual designs for the treatment plant on-site completed and approved through the state, so.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You knew it.
Let's go back to what Seth said in the.
I don't know, I'm not going to sit down, Shane.
He knows, he knows. Oh, I see. Too late. Couple of questions, Chris. Did we do ICE before we got the GMP?
Did we, did we do the bid?
Did we do a independent cost estimate before we got the GMP from the construction company? How do we know that what they gave us is a fair price?
Right. So, so what we did with them is we bid it out through them, and so they get pricing from the different companies, and then they help us select the lowest bids.
Okay.
For those, so that's kind of how this was done.
So this isn't, this isn't necessarily put, put together by Alder, they packaged it through a series of low bids with subcontractors?
Yeah.
Okay. Well.
Some, some do. Right now, Alder's really busy, and so.
So they're subbing a ton of this out, for sure. So you've seen those subcontract, you've seen those bids, and we're getting a, a fair price with each one of those?
Corey and Jared went through that process. I wasn't part of that, so.
Just hold you accountable is all.
Yeah.
So I guess that was the biggest question, is how do we know? And, and we know that via low bid through each of the subcontract. That's the answer, correct? All right, the last one was, there is a huge $3.2 million off-site pumping subcontract, and I'm assuming that went through the same process. You bid that, that pipe work out, and that's the result you got?
So, so the $3.2 million includes the piping, too. It's, but there is a lot of, so there's a, there's a separate item for pumping, and what we wanted to do is get the worst-case scenario for the pumping because of how difficult that became on the sewer trunk line, you know, going all the way out on the west side of I-15. And so not wanting to have that be an unbidded-type change order, we actually got a bid on it, but we didn't want to commit to that amount of pumping if it didn't become necessary, and so that's.
Okay. So it's, it's very difficult for me as a city council member, and I think the public, to look through these documents and know that they have a fair price. A little bit of that explanation in the, in the write-up, how you came to these things, I think would be helpful. I fully support how you did that. I just, it's hard to tell how we did that.
So, and, and maybe what would help you is, is include the tabulations with all the.
The bid tabs? Yeah, for sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, we can do that.
And I have far less questions, Mayor, next time, far less.
Sure. Yeah, I'll believe that when I see it. All right. I'm sure there's no other questions, so I would entertain a motion.
Chad had one. Chad was starting to raise his hand.
No, I'm good.
You've taken them all.
I move that we accept the guaranteed maximum price of $8,792,828.51 with Alder Construction for the solids handling and off-site piping projects.
Wow, I'm impressed.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Things can move. Okay. Resolution 2127 to endorse Title 13 Changes Endorsing and Drafting Wastewater Utility Ordinance. Hey.
All right, so Vaughn can correct me if I get this wrong, but basically, what we're doing is, is the state requires us to have a certain wastewater, a certain ordinance on how we do pre-treatment wastewater-type governance. And they want that ordinance to be a certain way. And, but before we can submit it to them to approve, they need to know that the council supports it and will likely pass the final version of it. And so what you're doing is you are saying, yes, we're good with you submitting it to the state for approval, and, and we'll likely approve what comes back from the state with any corrections. And so that's what this is.
Wow, even if once we swear in a new council member. Any questions, or dare I dare ask?
I'm not asking one. I support this one 100%.
All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to endorse Resolution 2127 to endorse Title 13 Changes Endorsing a Draft Wastewater Utility Ordinance.
Got a motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll-call vote. Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
PCA adjustment for December and January bills. Oh, somebody new? I like it.
Somebody else has to answer Shane's questions, right?
I'm happy I have that reputation.
Yeah, right. This is the second council in a row where I'm talking about power rates. All right, so we're going to talk about power cost adjustment. So we have a power cost adjustment on our power rates for our power customers. So what is a power cost adjustment? Let me first explain where our power comes from. Well, at least the agency that we get the power from. So we are a member city of the Utah Municipal Power Agency. We're just one of the member cities there. And we receive our power from them. Due to fluctuating market conditions, the cost of power isn't very consistent with water. We kind of know what it's going to cost us to get water to our residents' houses and our businesses. But power is much more volatile. All right, so due to fluctuating market conditions, UMPA has a power cost adjustment on their bill that they're either giving us a credit because power costs less than they expected to or they're charging us a little extra because power costs more than they expected to. And that's passed on to each of us. And then we calculate our own PCA that we have on a per kilowatt-hour basis that we adjust to all of our rates, that adjusts our customers' bills. And since the pandemic, the cost of power has actually been less than we expected it to, which has caused us to pass on savings to our customers. So in fiscal '21, we had over $870,000 that we were able to reduce our power bills to customers by. So it's going right back to our customers. All right, so this is our bill for last month from UMPA. You can see the total amount, 2.1 million, just over that. And I circled these in red, the power cost adjustment come from UMPA. And this is actually for July's usage, so there's a delay. We got this on October 25th, but it's for July's usage. And it was 686,000. This number hadn't ever been before above 400,000, so it was quite large. And when I calculated our PCA, it came out to 2.2 cents per kilowatt hour, which our PCA had never been above 1.4 cents per kilowatt hour. So it was quite a bit higher than normal. So this is my first month calculus, I went and looked and had other people make sure I did the calculations right. And sure enough, that it was a large PCA from them. So we went and met with them and they're like, well, next month, it's not going to be bad at all. It's actually a credit of 11,000. So we were thinking, well, do we want to pass on this 2-cent PCA all in one month? And we thought, well, if we know that next month's going to go lower, let's spread that out over two months. So if we don't smooth out the PCA and just pass it on, we'll have a 2.2 cent additional charge on the next month. And then a month after that, it'll be lower. And I actually think this will be quite a bit lower than that, possibly even negative 1 cent. I just got, in the last hour, I got their bill for the current month. Or we can smooth it out and have a slight, a smaller positive PCA for two months. All right, so let me show you kind of the impact if you don't do anything. So this is our standard rate, and then we always take the PCA for a month and we add it to that rate here. And this is the residential rate. So instead of billing 6.6 cents for the first 500 kilowatt-hours that we bill, we're going to bill 6.4 cents. And on this one, instead of 8 cents, it's going to be 7.8 cents. Instead of 9.5 cents, 9.3 cents. And then you can see, so this is the last four months PCAs. And then this is the big one that we just saw. And you can see, we go from a 6.6 cent tier to an 8.9, an 8 cent to a 10.3, and then 9.5 cent to 11.8 cent. Now here's the effect on a bill for a customer of 1,200 kilowatt-hour usage. So this is just an example amount of usage, could be higher or lower than that, right? So I said that we passed on nearly $900,000 in savings. So with these that are negative, the bill from the PCA actually, the bill actually goes down. So that's how we're passing on a credit to our customers, right? So if we don't do anything, this is a sample impact of a 1,200 kilowatt-hours of what that bill could be compared to prior months. So instead of paying around 110, now you're paying 137. And then the next month, you go back down to 107. All right. Large power has a different rate structure. They pay, and it's not tier, they just pay a flat 4.6 cents per kilowatt hour. And you can see how changing, how the PCA affects that. So one of our large power customers uses 208,880 kilowatt-hours. And I just said, okay, well, what would that be with each of these different PCA? So you go, if not, if we didn't have a PCA or if it was zero, it's 9,700. With this large one, 14,400, which is pretty big, right? And you can see that it fluctuates quite a bit. So if we do decide to, if you do decide to smooth it out and average out the next two months, you can see this bill on a 1,200 kilowatt-hour usage customer becomes much more manageable and much less odd-looking, I guess you would say. On a large power customer, still quite a bit bigger, but at least they're paying it over two months rather than a single month. And I do think this would go down below a cent after getting their bill. Yeah, so that is, I propose that we smooth it out over two months. Makes sense for people's budgets, right? Any questions?
Shane?
Aside from Shane.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Jordan?
Yes.
So is this a one-time thing? Or are you looking for authorization to be able to do this in the future as well if we see the same thing come up?
So the PCA, it's part of the fee schedule in the power rate. So you guys set the rates for the city. So if the PCA is something you want to change in any way, shape, or form, that's something you can do at some point.
Yeah, I think Seth has a comment that we're going to let him say.
Thank you, let me just add and picking up on where Tyler was talking. This is the largest PCA we've seen, I think, in the history of this structure that we have.
Way to go, Jordan. New job.
Bienvenido. We, it certainly could be a fluke in terms of how the power rates come, right? Just in a graph of charts, it's just the one tick mark. But as we know, our power rates are subject to times and circumstances and we're certainly entering times where there is more volatility in the market. So I think what I would ask, and if you're comfortable with this approach, we can, we thankfully have time where we get the PCA and before we have to bill the PCA, we have the sense, or we know what the next month's PCA is. So we actually do have time to deal with this before we have to recover those costs. So we can do this again if we see some volatility in the market. I don't love that long-term. I think that's good for circumstances like today. But I think long-term, having a more sustainable approach and a better view of how the rate structure should be is a better approach. Again, the PCA has worked fine for the longest time, right? But if things continue to be volatile, then I think this is, this can become wonky. As Jordan just showed, especially for our large power providers where a 2 cent increase is.
Huge.
You know, 35%. So what I'd like to do is review over the next six months or so the PCA and how we function and in coordination with UMPA, are there better ways? I love how we go up with the PCA and we go down with the PCA. In our history, we used to hit the floor of zero. And so if the PCA from UMPA was less than, so like next month's PCA is going to be a negative number, we would keep that savings. We wouldn't pass it on to our customers. When Mayor Anderson was the mayor, that's when we tweaked our PCA to allow us to go negative. You know, if we're going to win, then the residents can win as well. And I think that was a good adjustment. But there may be a better way for us to smooth out our PCA on an annual basis. I think that's what Provo does. We could also create a rate stabilization fund, which is also what Provo does. It allows them to, if there are any savings from PCAs that are lower, then they then put that in a separate account and can use it on the days when the PCA goes above and they don't have those volatile swings. I'd like to study that a little bit. And if there's a change that we feel is worth proposing to you, then we can bring that to you in the next six months or so. In the meantime, if we see any of these volatilities, I would propose that we do the same thing. Whether you want us to come back and let you know of that like we are today or if you want to just give us that authority for the next six months or so, that's fine as well. Yes, Shane?
I do have one.
I saw your mouth move and I had to.
So you're talking about a two-month smoothing at max at any one time?
Well.
For now.
Under these circumstances, yes. If we had seen a PCA that was just as high, we.
You wouldn't.
In month two, there wouldn't be a choice, we'd have to do something.
Sure. So, but if we say yes to this and we say do this for the next six months, we're talking about February, March, April, May, like we're two-month blocks, two-months blocks, max, okay? I have no more, I was just clarifying in my head.
And I go along with that. I think we want to do this. Doing a rate stabilization, UMPA does that for the six-member cities. And probably, was it about seven years ago, six years ago? We didn't see an impact as a city because UMPA used that money out of the rate stabilization and kept our rates the same. And so, like I said, Provo does it. That's something we probably ought to instruct Seth and you guys to look into. That might be a good way that we don't have this volatile, we go up and down. In the meantime, we need to address this the way we're doing now and so.
So is that a motion?
I can't make a motion. I can just ask for a motion. And I'd like to have a motion.
Motion to approve PCA adjustment for December and January bills.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cordell.
Wait, 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 wait. Can we, don't go into public, don't go into the new business, the next section yet. Do we need to give you direction to do this next two months so we don't, or you just want to just roll it from here?
I think we'll need to adjust it in the future if we see a large one.
Come back.
Yeah, we can.
All right, that's fine. Cool.
Chris? I just, so question, just stepping back a little bit and sorry. When we were going through the contracts to get a contractor to build our sewer plant and what Shane's talking about, wasn't that part of that contract and those contractors? That they did this subcontracting, that they did that bidding out? Wasn't that part of that process that they were required to do some of that bidding out?
Yeah, so it's a very big document of how the construction management would be done by this general contractor. And they get involved early on with the design because their access to contractors, subcontractors, they can give us pricing, they can review different options for us that, well, this will cost us a lot less money. One thing that they've helped us out a lot with is how do we stabilize the ground? Provo is building their treatment plant in a very similar soil environment. And so a lot of what they learned over in Provo, they're learning here. But they've gone out and they've gotten bids for different ways to even do the ground stabilization. Then they come back and we evaluate and maybe we'll pay a little bit more for this, like an RFP. But we felt like it's a lot better product. It's kind of a detailed process of how they get the bids. Similar to what we did at the library.
Right, okay. Thanks, Chris.
All right.
Okay.
We okay now?
Do we?
Are you okay that we?
I'm just curious, so we had the meeting down at the fairgrounds this week with the River Bottoms. Do we need to have a plan forward with that?
Is it on the agenda?
Okay, just, never mind. I mean, we need an opportunity to talk, like amongst ourselves. We didn't get to that night and we should not have that night, totally. What are we going to do with the River Bottoms moving forward? We heard a bunch of information, right? We heard some input from the community. I think we all have an opinion about what direction we want to head, but I don't know what Chad wants to do, I don't know what Mike wants to do.
Yeah, for sure.
Dave kind of gave us his next steps, but you can repeat.
Yeah, for sure, and Dave, you're welcome to jump up here too. We have a lot of different directions that we can go. And probably the biggest next step would be, is there a direction that you would want to go before we do anything? It would be very comfortable, or it would be very, comfortable, that's a weird word. It'd be very appropriate to have a discussion as a body if you want to give us direction of doing, do this or that, research this or that based on the feedback that you had. Planning Commission is going to take it up in their January meeting? Yeah.
Okay.
And we didn't receive a lot of feedback from the meeting that we have, that we can use toward drafting changes to the ordinance as it was written. One or two comments, I think, that were very, very insightful, but outside of that, I think it was more opinion, you know.
Do you like it or don't like it?
Yeah. So not anything that we could really incorporate into changes for the draft of that TDR ordinance. So we as staff, as we have talked, we're processing what we got, making sure that the information is available. And I think our plans, Craig, help me out here, I can't remember now what our plans were. Was it for the December council meeting? Were we going to have them some dialogue or? January? Did I hear the mayor say January?
I said January.
I could have figured that's where this was headed, but.
That's fantastic.
I want to hear what Brandon has to say, like, I would like to have a.
This isn't a public hearing.
Hey, we can, you can have conversations all you want, yeah. So I mean, if you want to have a conversation, it's not noticed, there isn't any decision that we can take or make, but.
It doesn't have to be tonight, I just want to know if in fact we're going to have that opportunity. Because I think it's, I mean, it's a major issue for our community and I think our community needs to know where we stand.
I think we definitely need to have that conversation, you know, as a council. Like I said, the planning board is going to take that up. They're going to get their input. I think the council needs to do the same.
Yeah, as I've talked with each of you individually, there's.
We probably need to come together as a group.
Yeah, there's a spectrum of thoughts about the issue. So you having, you know, no decision-making plan, but just, you know, ruminating, what are you thinking, what did you hear, what are you thinking, et cetera? I think it's totally appropriate. One thing I would always stress in a setting like that, so let's say we wanted to dive into that discussion right now. You might have some say, we weren't able to be there. It's important that those that may be watching or later watching this meeting, we held the public hearing and so that public hearing has ended. The requirement that the council has in a public setting to take feedback from the public has been satisfied. But that doesn't mean that you individually can't get feedback from people and you collectively as a body, you have to be able to talk about it. But you don't have to take comments from the public. And so it's not necessary that you open it back up again for the public to come up and have a free microphone for any amount of time. But for you to be able to deliberate, you can do that however often you want and in the settings that you want. And just kind of like what the mayor was doing tonight with the gentleman that said he wanted to participate in the discussion. It's not a public hearing, so if you want to allow it, you can, but it's not mandated. And that's something that I think on this topic and the public often will forget. And so they might be frustrated that you shouldn't have been able to say anything about this tonight because we weren't there to talk about it. Well, you do your business in public, but you don't necessarily involve the public in all of the business that you do. So I would, I would, I say that not by way of a lecture to the public or to you, but just to remind, feel free that you can have a conversation and you don't have to involve the public at large. They can listen, but they don't have to participate. I think you have good channels of communication that have been created, people are talking to you. You can certainly voice some of the questions that they have. But to make it a free-for-all and have long meetings, you've done that in terms of public hearing.
I think one of the most important things you said there is we conduct our business in public and this is a major topic within our community.
Yeah.
We should be as open as we possibly can as we move forward. And it doesn't have to be, certainly not tonight, and it can be into the next year, but I just wanted to make sure we put that on a calendar somewhere and have the opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah, and if you want to have, if you want to start that dialogue sooner than later, then, you know, we can put that. later, then, you know, we can put that on the on the December 7 meeting, we can do it on the January 4. We won't have a full body, I believe, on the January 4 meeting. So we I'll what I'll do is I'll maybe solicit some feedback from you if you want to start, if you want to have some conversations before the planning commission does, and they might like that, because they might want to see, you know, what are you thinking, to give them some direction.
So if we did it on December 7, would it live in infamy?
It may.
It might. Hopefully not that bad.
Well, I mean, you know, that's the last meeting, right, that we have.
This year.
For the calendar year, yeah.
Oh, it's is it December 7?
Whatever the Tuesday is, I
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what it is.
I got that right? Okay.
We're going to roll into the new year with the new council, new mayor. I'm fine putting it off to then, because I would like to hear Kevin's thoughts as we move forward, but.
That would push us until the second meeting.
And that's fine.
Okay.
I'm not in a hurry. I think what we heard the other night was, no one's in a hurry, they're the landowners want to continue to farm and do what they do, so that's fine.
Yeah, I think some would probably tell you they are, some that are ready to sell and do things they are, but nobody in that area has submitted a petition to annex, and so we don't have any ability to to be the land use authority for anybody there. So there is a step they have to take before anything you do matters.
Right.
Right? So if there was an annexation petition, then I'd say there's there's a rush potentially, but there isn't, so there isn't.
Okay.
I move we go into closed session. Oh, geez.
It's okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure.
I appreciate it.
Mayor, I've I've got it.
Try to get it in.
I've got it, before Mr. Gordon goes into a closed session.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
See what you've started?
Forescore and seven years ago. I'm just kidding.
Our forefathers.
Uh, no, before we go into closed session, though, there is a concern that's been raised, and so we we have the ability to to solicit from the public that you add an item to closed session, so in addition to what's listed on the agenda.
Land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
Yeah, there there's been an issue that's been raised, and and we solicit your your consent to also add that we go into closed session for the language that includes personnel matters. It's a lot more verbose than that, but is it okay if they say?
Character competence of an individual.
We always just used to say
Personnel.
I got it right here.
There we go.
I move we go into closed session for land transaction, reasonably imminent litigation, and to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental of an individual.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
We want to make sure that our lights go where they are. Thank you for everyone that was here.